The council unanimously voted at our last meeting, I believe it was our last meeting, meeting before last, to not fund the contract with CCI. The debate that occurred that day was that there was no bid for that contract. We're also members who had concerns about cost, potential cost overruns. So, you know, I would really like to, you know, every, I have been honored to see some member of this body speak against the jail project once that I'm aware of. We want to get a jail done. We just want to make sure that we are protected as humanly possible in that process. So, just to kind of circle back on, you know, where we are, the current contract, you know, was voted down because of the lack of a bid and the lack of a guarantee. So, I don't think that unless something else has changed, there's been a material change to that. So, you know, I don't know if any member of this body would like to speak to.
I was absent at that meeting there, and had I been there, it would have been six to one because I would have voted for it, but I'd just like to add that in there. So, go ahead, Doc.
I voted the contract down last time because I thought it was about, excuse me, three quarters of a million dollars or something. I was interested in bids, but it seems that it's come to the point that we have one method or the other. I appreciated your figure, some one and a half percent versus five percent. My basic feeling is that if you're going to pay somebody, if somebody's going to take the risk, you're going to pay for it. So, I, I am for Jack's move.
John, listen, why did you scream back here?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm only retired from Michigan, thank God. I was on this committee when the commissioner was deciding that. Dylan, even I, we were very satisfied with Jack. And I sat next to Al Olaford, last joint meeting. As far as I'm concerned, he's one of the most intelligent men I've ever been financially. That's what he's done his whole life. We walked out the hallway about a week before he passed away, and he said, "If you hire somebody else, it will be a big mistake." And I think the reason that 14 million, but we first started this project, it was going to be between 12 and a half and 14 million. And the delay, that's how much, so I urge you guys, go ahead. It's just costing Carroll County taxpayers money every day. That's all I'm saying.
And I appreciate it, that council chair here has decided, or has reminded us what we're really here for. And that is, we, we have a discuss, we signed a contract with Jack and you guys. So, and now, right about Josh, that it was because of no bid and because of cost overruns. So, I think we should confine, we already made a decision on what method of delivery we're going to have. That, I don't see any purpose of beating that dog around anymore. We've already decided that, what method we're going to have. So, now what we need to do is fix the two problems if we can, and that is the no-bid situation and the cost overruns. Now, I'm probably the reason that there's no bid because I had, I didn't know Jack was going to start it. It's not like we've been buddies for years and all that, but he, he was somebody that was recommended to me to steer me on a way because I didn't know anything about building a 14 million dollar building, or a 12 million dollar, or a 10. But I have talked to him so many times and listened to him and gone through this all so many times, that I have a great deal of confidence that he will and has, over and over and over, delivered what he said he would deliver. I've talked to people that he's worked for. I get no problem from anybody about it. So, my position was, why do I want to go out here and have other people have to do all these things and prepare a bid and prepare packets and all kinds of stuff, turn into, but in my mind, I've already decided, okay, I got 10 more people coming in here and they're all going to be bidding on being the construction manager, but I've already got my vote made up. I don't want to waste people's time, professionals' time. So, I suggested that we just go ahead and tape check. I don't think there's going to be significant difference in bids, no matter what, they're all at the same pretty low looking. As far as cost overruns, I think there is something we can, we should really sit down and look at and figure out what your perception of the cost overrun problems are and get it fixed, okay? If we can. Let's confine our whole discussion to these two things. Jack, or Doc?
If I may, I think if, as a group, you select who you think will do the best job, we research this, I mean, something can happen, walking out of here, something could fall down the stairs or anything, things are going to happen. If we're going to move forward, we've got to select somebody, put our faith in them, and go with it.
And we've got to hold our feet to the fire, too, Doc. We're, we're prepared to do that.
Absolutely.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't give a maximum price or you wouldn't change that in a contract?
I could give you, if you really wanted one, I'd give you a maximum price, but it's virtually meaningless at the backside of where I give it to you.
For the entire project or for your fee?
No, for the entire project.
Yeah, it's because by the time I give it to you, I'll have the contingency where I want, I'll have all the bids in hand, I'll have good soil, and away we go with the sunshine. So, what have you gotten from me? As a guarantee?
A guarantee.
A guarantee.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, but, you know, you're putting more stock in what the guarantee is than what you truly are getting in the guarantee.
So, what you're saying is even if you gave us a guarantee, you're not going to give it to that?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that when I give it to you, there's no point in particularly getting it except you'll feel better, but it won't provide any more safety for the most part because the job's already been bid and it already has a contingency in place.
And that's, I guess, coattailing, like what Jack stated, you know, we, we would, I guess, like to be able to figure out if it's bad. And there is absolutely no way we can do that. Because with a guaranteed maximum price, it cannot be presented until the bids are in. And as Jack stated, you're already a third of the way down the road if you've got more.
Money-wise, you're all there already.
You're already committed. So, you know, that guaranteed maximum price isn't going to come in until such time that we're already very stupid with the project anyway. And that was my, my original, my original thing, is that we cannot, we just don't have that ability. And that's the problem between the two different methods of delivery. And with a guaranteed maximum, obviously, it's not much more than an insurance policy. We all know how much insurance costs. So, you know, are there going to be, Jack stated himself, there has yet to be a single project that he's been involved with that he doesn't have or hasn't had an overrun.
You always have overruns, you have to work for them.
Yeah.
But those are always adjusted towards the contingency of the budget, so, sure. And we probably got the already out of there.
He said historically, it's one and a half percent, and he builds in a five percent margin.
What?
Well, in our case, two of three.
Okay, well, I thought, I thought you said five.
Yeah, no, I get it, but.
But if you build as many jails as you said that you have built, you should be able to get that number really close. You're saying you can't get that number until you bid everything out. Why?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that when we get done with the estimates, we are honing in right there on that little slot of cost, okay? If there's a problem in the slot as of this date, but rather this date, before we even bid, we start making adjustments.
Yeah.
So, you don't want to go to a referendum, so you got to make adjustments. Because you shouldn't have to put yourself in that kind of situation. I think what you're doing is you're creating an animal that probably won't exist for you. I know it's smart to be concerned about it, but you won't be in that kind of difficult situation, you as well.
Why would you be willing to bid as a CMC in Fulton County but not here?
I didn't bid as a CMC in Fulton County. Here's the deal, CMA is considered a professional service by statute in state.
You didn't respond to the RFP for the CMC? You didn't respond to the, to the RFP?
No, I responded to CMA, not CMC, because they haven't decided yet, okay? In Indiana, CMA, much like architects and attorneys, professional service, you don't have to bid at all, just pick somebody you feel comfortable with. That's what Bill's talking about. CMC by statute, you have to run a bid. Why? Because they can potentially become a contractor after job as well. So, John, do you have your hand up?
Well, I don't want to interrupt this gentleman, so I'll wait till Mr. Paul is done.
So, you did not respond to the RFP when they?
Yes, to the CMA. Because they didn't ask for a response on either delivery number, they asked for a construction manager. So, we responded to CMA, they responded to CMC. Okay?
Yeah, John? Thank you, sir. If I understood, and ma'am, please correct me, my understanding was that in essence it's set at 15 million expecting a cost of 14 million, am I correct?
The motion made by the commissioner, the project not to exceed 14.5 million.
14.5. Okay. 500,000 on 14 million is roughly 3.2, 3.4 percent, somewhere in there, I believe. Am I correct, sir?
I would say.
The issue that sits, whatever contractor you pick, is that that design better meet everything that's required by law, not by guess, or we can cut here, but it does everything that has to be done. Then you've got a number to whoever you go to and say, "That's it."
So, that would be the gentleman that says that with your rear.
But we can't live, forgive me, sir, where we will get into trouble federally and state and the rest of the known earth of yahoos is, in an effort to get back to that number that we thought, okay, it's going to be it, and we end up finding out, we've got to cut things out of there. And some of those things are untouchable. And every one of the groups I've evaluated who did presentations, all the counties involved, as well as other counties, have said, "Build what it is and don't take things," and I'm going to say this because it's in the literature I can provide you, "Don't take away the storage rooms and the facilities that the people who operate the jail know they need just to cut the square footage and cut the costs, because it will come back and be a problem." So, all I'm saying is, if it's built, or if it's designed right to meet all the legal criteria, to meet this man and his staff and the needs of this county, if one looks at the growth functionality of, let's just say, the bad side of humanity, the growth rate here doesn't take much to realize, if we build the maximum size that was designed into the program, it's quite probably going to be undersized in less than 20 years. Well, this decision's been taking almost 20 years. So, what one decide, forgive me, sir, for a moment, you designed the building to allow for a pod ad or whatever built into it. So, if we get to that point, we're not looking at a new building or an entirely new structure, we have a mechanism in place to, as a contingency, to keep that cost under control. But we're overrun with the criminal element in this country. They don't follow the gross national product and they don't follow the consumer price index. And forgive me on not being angry, I'm just saying, design it, build it, cover everything, make sure every dot, I is dotted, every T is crossed, and that is what it is. For who, whichever gentleman?
And don't worry about how to pay for it.
Can I just have?
I'll.
Sorry, go ahead.
Forgive me, ma'am. Nobody has money to spare. I don't care who owns a 3,000 acre farm, or if they live in a half of a duplex, nobody's got money just floating around. But if we get into a legal situation with the federal government and an institution of incarceration, they will adjust our outlook on life, and they're not really pleasant about it. That federal judge sitting up there, the VGO has to go sit, has made it very clear, it's her way or somebody's going to be on the highway. And she doesn't care where they get the money from.
And I feel like we're getting a little bit of a radical here because we're not, nobody's saying we're going to cut anything.
And that's all I'm asking. If it's done right and built right, these men will know.
I'm pretty sure the architect would tell us if we were trying to cut corners that he didn't take appropriate, and he hasn't voiced those concerns.
You know, I think at the end of the day, look, there's, there's a lot of similarities between the delivery methods. And what I, what I can't arrive at, and even if you're a third of the way, you have two-thirds of the construction to deliver. If all things are equal and you're only within one and a half percent, or whatever it is, wouldn't it be proven on behalf of your taxpayers to force that marker down on a guarantee? Why, why wouldn't you guarantee it?
You know, there's somebody else in this room that's built many jails, I have two architects in the back of the room. I think they have an opinion on the value of a guaranteed max. Okay, I would like to hear comments from our two architects in the back of the room. Yeah?
It's you, Mike.
Are you sure?
But young Scott?
Look, I've done a lot of work with Jack over the years. I've got a project right now that's, I'm not in business picking sides here. The most important thing that you need to consider is, and this is really a game of trust, what do you trust the most? The reality is, when the numbers come in, when, when the numbers get hardened under this system or under that system, it's within a week of each other, okay? They're not going to give you a guaranteed max until all the bids are in, and they know what the number is like.
We have before, but our preference, you're correct.
The way you're, the way the contracts are read today, the way the law reads, which is what you're going to follow. They're not going to give you a number until all the numbers are in. See, things can happen here. Really fundamentally, there's, there's only a few differences. In the CM at risk, the CM at risk holds the contingency. Under the, under the current contracting mechanism, CM at risk holds the contingency. They don't use contingency, contingency to get to keep it. In his situation, you own the contingency. If you don't use the contingency, you'll get to keep it. That's the, that is one of the differences. The other difference is bonding. CM at risk, there's a single bond to a single contractor, covered the entire project. The entire project is not going to go sideways. Pieces of it may, but the whole project never goes sideways. In the situation with a CM agency agreement, then you have bonds on each individual contractor. I don't know how many we have on this project, say 12 to 15, that probably, probably goes that number of contracts. Each one of them would be bonded. Fundamentally, there's not a lot of difference between the two. The, the application of them is a little bit different. But I'm here to tell you, we're ready to start working with some of the people. We are close to being like in need of, I mean, he said, when you're in the end of design development, well, we're targeted end of design development November 7th, so we're going to be at the end of DE real soon. Soil moorage are being done almost literally as we speak. Trial survey's been, been proven, we surveyed it with all the corn in the field, not real rough. They got those numbers, so we can start, start getting some elevations set. We're, we're clean now. Corn's out and we can, you know, verify all the elevations. As soon as we get soil moorage back, we know we're dealing with soils, we're going to be, we're going to be good. You are absolutely right, we're building a critical infrastructure building and our DE is going to be nothing to compromise. We can't, can't do it. So, this is, you know, this is a matter of you guys getting comfortable with the numbers and the risk rate. I don't, I'm not going to sit here and say, "They're the best or he's the best."
No, I'm not.
Because?
The question I'm going to ask you is straight out here. You're designing us a jail that looks beautiful. We went over and saw a jail that you had done before, it was beautiful. Do you think that we're going to be able to have that jail for less than 15 million dollars?
Will you move it?
Yes.
We don't? I didn't hear that.
We get moving, you know? Look, we started, we got hired a year ago, more than a year ago right now, okay? We've expended a million dollars in inflation costs on this jail facility in a year. What we could have done last year for 12 and a half is now 13 and a half. And if we keep, if we keep going, the bird's not going to fly anymore. So, it is very important to get to move ahead, very important to move ahead.
The concern that we all have is going over that 15 million dollar mark. None of us want to pop over that. So, I don't want to pop over 14 million, but.
15 million dollar mark, because everybody in here knows that 15 million dollar mark got set. That was Unbo, what's the name now?
Baker Tilly.
Yeah, Baker Tilly. Came in and said, "Here's the tax revenue component. That tax revenue component will support about a 15 million dollar project." Well, the reality is, that tax revenue component probably will support the project a little bit more than that because they had 20 percent margin of error in the, in their numbers. We all know how that works. So, the 15 million, you think it's a hard number, but it's a soft number based upon the volume of income and the state legislature changed the law last year to give you a 22 year bond issue, a 22 year amount.
Just clarifying, that's actually not the reason that the 15 million, 15 million dollar number is a hard test number. We're guaranteeing these bonds with property taxes and.
Oh, you're not?
Yes, we are. We can't, we can't, John. We, we are. We cannot get 120 percent.
You didn't, you didn't.
We institute the tax, the tax is not paid to debt, the bond is serviced. So, we will have to guarantee these bonds with a portion of property tax, which puts us under the purview of a referendum.
Everybody knows that. I don't know if that's true.
And that's what we will be in that, so if we.
You're, we're okay as we said, I believe, but we got to move. We can't be stuck here.
What's the, what's the November date you threw out? You said November 7?
Yeah, November 7, we're targeted to being completed in design development. Where the exterior of the building comes together, we know what the products are like, we are, we've settled the locations. From between November 7th and about the middle of February, we'll be in working drawings, drawing specifications, picking out every product, finishing up all of the detailed stuff with, with the sheriff, and really get the documents completed. That's the biggest section of work, we'll get one half or more.
Middle of February.
Middle of February. What we're trying to do is get to the point where we can bid this project about the end of February, so we can start construction, we can throw some out of the ground, and that's the target. So, you know, I expect we'd see bids in the middle of March, latest. We push, we push it, March, you know, it's spring. We're going to start in spring. And again, depending upon who we're working with, you know, we need to get moving.
So, I would say, I think, I really feel like the construction manager at risk is the best way to present the county. But I also appreciate what Jack brings to the table and the, the depth of knowledge and experience that he has, and the fact that he's got working relationships with Elavas and with our commissioners and many in this room. What would be the reason against having Jack as an owner's rep, putting an RFP out for a construction manager at risk, and then bidding that, and having him work as an owner's rep, and still be working this project under a CM at risk delivery?
That sounds like a motion, would you?
I would, I would make that a motion.
What do you want? Because you're, he's going to be our go-to guy no matter what. He's our go-to guy no matter what. And then going with the guarantee, he's got to work with another company, which will cost that more money. When we go through Jack, Jack, Jack gets the contracts, he gets the bids, he brings them to us. We pick who we want to do the bid or the job, and he ain't going to scare a trunk. He just puts another step into the, in the system and says, "Thank you a lot."
Well, I wondered if Jack would be an owner's rep if we did vote that way and be, what would be a roughly percentage of what could you charge of the 14 and a half million dollars?
Well, the way you're right, you're just adding layers of money under the system.
So, what would be the percentage?
Do you work in a capacity as an owner's rep in other counties?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, for 100% of different revenue.
So, this, this system would be out and around the border.
If you decide to go to CMC, I'll cut the heart right out of that contract because it's part of that contract that are not going to come into your band.
What'd you say? Say that again.
I said, "If you make me the opposing rep, project manager, whatever it's name, who I use, and if you want to go CMC, I would cut the heart out of that contract." There's all kinds of things in there that are not very bandaged.
So, you'd be a good guy to have as an owner's rep.
But maybe I'd think with different systems, so I don't have to cut the heart out of it.
And if they cut the heart out of it, they may not accept the contract.
Do we have a contract? What is a contract? I don't even know what a contract is.
We signed a contract, I think you just signed it.
Well, I know that contract.
So, we failed, it's out.
He said he has a new contract, but I don't think you get to see what.
I haven't seen it, I just heard that way, he was taking off. I haven't seen it.
I want to, I want to kind of dig back. We're going to build a jail or we're not going to build a jail. And I think if we don't go with Jack, we're not going to end up building a jail for the county. And when the state comes in and they tell us it's going to cost 20 million to build a new jail, we're the reason why the county's going to bankrupt.
We all want to.
And if you four want to live with the county going bankrupt, that's fine. Either way, they live. Why is it my opinion? When the county comes in and they tell us that it's going to cost 20 million to build a jail, I mean, when the state comes in. That's what's going to happen. What if an accident or something unforeseen happens and it costs 20 million dollars to Jack? Are we bankrupt at that point? He said it was not. But did you not just say that it wouldn't happen?
You guys, I don't blame you for any worst-case scenarios, but, you know, I've done this so many times, it's a likelihood of that average is almost virtually none.
Then you should be able to guarantee.
And then a guarantee can be easy.
We're having a bad time, we're all against, we're all against the slide.
We're mitigating our, over. We've had a near-screwed up 20 million dollars.
It wasn't.
We've had this discussion for. When you're sitting down there, you're telling us that we're trying to tell you that to do, but you're sitting down there telling us who we have to pick. That's what, that's why they're here.
We're not for bid.
Why do we want to look for bid when we got the man right there to do the job?
We're negotiating, but Jack.
You want to look at that, that's how you do it.
I want to, I mean, where are we hitting the middle on? I mean, where are we hitting the middle on? If they decide, we find, that's our, we find. We don't decide who the companies are. We don't bring them in like we brought them in. Wait, has anybody said that we have to use certain companies?
Nope.
No.
We have been trying to reason and ask questions.
That's going to bring them in every meeting. You do, every meeting, you bring these people in. Every single meeting, you bring these actual actors. We attend these meetings because we're interested in earning your business. It's not, I don't sit here as a me versus Jack thing. From the same company.
Yes, comment, Al, here's your audience.
I just want to say, from having sat on this side through most of these meetings in the last year and a half, it's come down to the way I see it, the commissioners want to go with Jack and the type of process he uses, the council is pushing to go with CM at risk, and the commissioners are the ones that have to decide what they're doing. You're supposed to help fund it. But the problem comes is as long as the two of you bodies are sitting there saying, "One wants the one method, the other one wants the other," you're going to sit here and argue until it's up to a 15, 16, 17 million dollar project because you've been dragging your feet.
And he was exactly right. And he was exactly right, our architect, when he says, whose gun is bigger than the other? That's exactly what this whole circus is.
You call it a circus, I call it negotiation.
Your negotiation skills. I don't think you should be personal about other people on this body. And I, I know you're not my boss, I can say whatever the hell I wanna say. I got elected by the people, you got elected by 14 people, so this is a professional norm. I'm just, you need to respect this. Yeah, respecting. I am respecting. I asked you to have some respect for it. Let's, let's move on. Jack, I wanna speak to your point. I don't care who, if Jack would say he would do a CMC and go through the process and guarantee the verdict, I'd, yes, please.
You've just said the key thing. You want a CMC.
Yes, I do.
And the commissioners wanna do Jack, the other method?
I would like to.
And so, until they either commit to doing a CMC, you're dragging your feet, correct?
We have a difference of opinion about...
Am I correct?
Well, no.
No, I think he is correct. Every meeting we've been to, you've said exactly the same thing. We make a decision, you say the same thing. We make a decision, you say the same thing. This is going on for months now. There's been no change. You say, let's compromise. I haven't heard you compromise one little bit yet. It's always the same statements. No, we are not going with another thing. We are not going with a CMT at risk. We've already decided that. So, that's ruled out. It's done. You wanna build a jail, you're gonna have to do it the right way. I am not gonna vote for a system that I think is full of corruption. I've been in this office for 19 years, and there hasn't been one hint of corruption until the last year. And you were part of it. Yeah, that's right, absolutely right. And I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do it. It's gonna be done right, or we're gonna forget building the jail. That's it. We're either gonna do it, or we're not gonna do it. You guys decide. You decide if you want jail or not.
It's your way or the highway, is that what you're saying?
We have voted, we have the authority. We are the ones who are supposed to pick. You're supposed to fund it.
We're obligated to fund whatever you put before?
You are not obligated to fund it. You are supposed to be cooperative with us. You have not cooperated one way.
You gotta have our interest in who we pick.
None.
That's the thing, it seems like you guys don't like...
I'd like to hear your voice.
We can speak to him however we want, but none of us have said we don't want a jail.
None of us has said what?
None of us has said we don't want a jail. None of us have said that we don't want that. I have asked Jack two or three questions tonight, which I call negotiating. And he said he is willing to do that. And we said, I've seen heads go like this, that we would accept that. So, how do you can sit there and say that he is not open to negotiating change?
Well, I'm gonna see. How many meetings have I been in? Every time something is said, I hear the, I can write it down and verbatim say, well, he's gonna say that. And it's always the same. It's always the same.
I liked what I just said, though. He said he's willing to change that. So, he's willing to change that.
Remember, this will be still a CMC thing because I'm not gonna do construction work at the site. I think that's a comfort that is. And that more allows for that, not gonna do that.
You don't have to be a contractor to do the CMC though, correct?
No.
You could be a CMC and not do any of it.
Great, you could, sure.
Would you not say, though, that if you change the format, it's gonna be more expensive?
Sure.
And the format that's on the table resting us?
Yes.
So, that's him. Have other, are there other contractors who have done a CMC project for less? I think that there have been.
But you know, it's like somebody to last. I mean, it's like saying that's like one note or two notes.
I think, I think the commissioners, I think the commissioners have done their groundwork to a great degree. And if we keep changing the parameters, we'll never get your jail built. That's, we wait another year, inflation will plow and get us over to 15 million.
Well, that was just proven by Mike back here. Sounds good. I'd just like for the council to take trust in us commissioners and that we picked the right person and we're gonna do the right thing. That is my promise. And I put my hand out to Jack, and I also, I give him my wallet. That's basically what I'm doing. I'm giving them my wallet. To guarantee that they're gonna bring me the best thing they can for what they can. No one can control the outcome until we start doing the bid. And neither one of us can guarantee that until after we get to bid.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
So, I've got a question for you or Bill LeBlanc. If you take this whole discussion that we've had for the last hour and 20 minutes and you set it aside, what did you envision was gonna happen today? Because there's no contract in front of us. We couldn't vote on anything or approve anything or make any progress or get further down the road on zero contract in front of us. So, all of this discussion, valuable or not, whatever your opinion is, if you set it aside, what were we gonna do today?
Well, I can tell you what I hoped you'd do.
Without Jack's contract?
I hoped that you would come in and getting this whole baloney of which delivery system we're gonna do. Like you say, set that aside. And say, we got a couple problems with your contract. And will you come to us? Will you and us compromise and fix this contract? That's what I hoped. Now, it doesn't have to be. I guess I come from Cutler, where my word is worth something. So, if he says, okay, what you have a problem with, I'm gonna fix it because I'm gonna do this, this, and this. And you say, okay, that's all right. We've won. The whole county is won. You don't have to have it written in front of you. That can come later. Well, I hope to find if this meeting was a meeting of minds, if he can come to something that you guys will accept, then we can put it right in a, you got, it'll come back to you again when it's in writing. But you can, you can get an understanding here even if it isn't legally written down. You can get an understanding.
But no, look, I wouldn't vote on something I don't have in front of me, right?
It's our contract. It's our contract, please sign it.
Fair enough, I agree with that.
You can review it.
It's a review.
Okay.
So, is that something that, gosh, we have a long between having another meeting ourselves and, you know?
You're guys agreeing to what the point first?
I believe so. And, I mean, I would certainly entertain Jack new writing, reordering.
But tell him first exactly what, I've heard several different things. What exactly do you want him to say?
What do we definitely have speaking in this conference?
I'd like to make a motion that we get a bid from Jack and others as an owner's rep.
That just delayed a month, 30 days, 90 days.
Why?
Why? Because you have to publicize it. You have to have meetings. And you guys have to have your meetings, you'll have one.
We can have a meeting next week, though. We can set up a...
I mean, our next meeting's the fourth, which we're gonna be messing somebody. Then the 18th, I don't know if I can be here. It doesn't work out. We just keep moving it by. You wanna finish, Ron?
Yeah, I wanna make the motion that we open for bid and give Jack an opportunity to bid as an owner's rep and put it out for others to bid as an owner's rep.
So, are you saying that you would ask for a resolution recommending this to the commissioners now?
Yes.
Okay. I think we've forgotten what our job is as a council.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? It's unbelievable. I would say... All right, I have a motion by Paul Ryder, seconded by Tim Randcliffe. Your motion was to open up bids for owner's rep?
To make a resolution.
Oh, resolution recommending?
Recommending that the commissioners get a, open the bids for an owner's rep and include Jack Crowe's in the, in the bidding.
And that's not, you're not doing anything with the construction? It's just for an owner?
Right, this is just for an owner.
But we still have to sign it. This is a...
This is a resolution, but you're like, we'll have to take a vote ourselves.
She wants to hear that too, Josh.
All right, let me get, you got it? All right.
Go ahead, please.
I believe that you have asked for a resolution of the council recommending to the commissioners that there be a bid from Jack and others to serve as owner's rep.
Okay, so that motion is on the floor for the resolution. Is there, there is a second question? Tim Randcliffe, is there any discussion?
I, again, I'll just say, I said months ago, put your, put your confidence in somebody you think that will do the job, and you go on. You just don't, you don't, you don't... I think the commissioners have done their due diligence. Select Jack, I think we should back Mark.
I, I agree that we have to come to somebody that is trusted. My problem that I've said from day one is that if you trust but verify it. So, what we're looking for is as much guarantee and protection, contractual protection, as we can receive. And it's our duty as a body